Latest technologies and trends. So those are the five weeks we are going to use social media to try to help tee up those things and other methods. But this is one of the best methods we can get, is to get up in front of the commissioners here and both proclaim that and let people know, you know, that they, how important building safety is. So with your help, recognizing Building Safety Month, not only do we intend to help protect residents and businesses, but we also want to build a safer, build safer communities. One last thing that I'd like to say is, as we enter this summer season of DIY, I encourage, and we encourage you to DIY it, but DIY it safely. So get your permits. Not only does it make good practical sense, it makes good financial sense. When your insurance company goes to find out, hey, we had a fire and so forth, that basement that you built without a permit, we're not going to cover that because you didn't get your permits. We want you to be safe in your homes, and we want to make sure that you protect your financial investments. So building safety is very important for multiple reasons. Mike is kind of here from that standpoint to talk about how our building officials and the roles they play. So thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
Commissioners, this proclamation is recognizing our employees, our staff. We have plan examiners, they're all registered architects and engineers, they've done years of training. All of our inspectors, inspectors, building inspectors go through all kinds of train, ongoing training and testing. And our customer service team also is certified and goes through training and testing. And you're also aware, because last time I was down here, we presented our new online permitting system to make it easier for the customers, for the citizens to get their permit to comply. We've had great success with that. We've had almost 1,500 applications since we went live in February. So thank you for the proclamation and appreciate your time.
Thanks, thanks for what you do. We all rely on building safety. I think you're kind of unsung heroes in that way, where we just kind of take for granted that the buildings that we're entering and that we live in are safe. And thanks to you, they are. But I'm delighted to hear about the online permitting system. We're very excited when you brought that forward. So you're continuing to innovate in a space that is really critical to the citizens of Hamilton County. So thanks for what you do. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
That's exactly what I was going to say about innovation and being creative and being flexible to deal with the changes in the environment and make it amenable for our, not only our businesses, but our residents. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you for, I want to also say thank you for the online component that we're adding. But I will have to say this, to have a director with the last name Noise bring the noise, he is one of the most hip directors we have. He and I, we share on our DJ Khalid and all our hip hop stuff that we do. But I knew it had to be under your leadership to bring this game on. And then you went into overtime. And I don't know if you're haunting me down because the Lakers lost last night. I'm not too happy, but just the innovation and what you do with your team is just, is amazing. So thank you both. And, and building safety is so critical. We don't think about it until something bad happens. But we have to make sure that the buildings are safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to come around and take a photo with you. I'm going to ask Elaine Fay to come forward. This is a proclamation recognizing In Demand Jobs Week. And I know Elaine's got her team with her. I'm going to let her introduce them as we read through the proclamation. So again, proclamation recognizing In Demand Jobs Week. Whereas each May, the state of Ohio celebrates In Demand Jobs Week, which is also celebrated locally by Hamilton County Jobs and Family Services through the Ohio Means Jobs Cincinnati Hamilton County Center. And whereas the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio is the local recipient and administrator of approximately $8.5 million in federal workforce dollars received annually, annually through the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act, and partners with Hamilton County JFS to maximize these dollars for the residents of Hamilton County. And whereas the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio has a memorandum of understanding with Hamilton County JFS to provide job services and wraparound support to Hamilton County residents via the OMJ Cincinnati Hamilton County Center.
And whereas the last program year, the OMJ Cincinnati Hamilton County Center served 17,839 community members, which is a 174% increase over the previous year, and received the Frederick A. Brier Award for Employee Excellence for its unemployment services. And whereas the OMJ Cincinnati Hamilton County Center provided service to 829 local employers, supported 253 employers through career fairs and hiring events, and assisted 41 companies and their staff members during layoffs in the last program year. And whereas the Workforce Council partners with the OMJ Cincinnati Hamilton County Center to leverage federal funds to work with over 20 training providers to connect Hamilton County residents to trainings to prepare them for the jobs in demand fields such as advanced manufacturing, construction, healthcare, information technology, and supply chain logistics.
Whereas last program year, the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio and its partners turned 580,623 in WIO, better known as WIA funds, into 8.46 million in income for clients. And in the state of Ohio, every dollar invested in WIA generates $17 in economic value. Whereas in 2024, the Hamilton County Youth Employment Program served 2,264 youth in Hamilton County, employing 1,289 youth with over 200 businesses, provided industry-recognized credentials to 173 youth, and paid over $2.5 million in wages and incentives. Whereas 2,144 youth were enrolled in the Comprehensive Case Management Program in the last program year, with 635 youth employed.
Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby recognize Hamilton County JFS, the OMJ Cincinnati Hamilton County Center, the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio, and their staff for all of the work they do to provide a strong workforce to the employers in Hamilton County. And we do hereby proclaim May 5th through 9th, 2025, as In Demand Jobs Week in all of Hamilton County.
We really appreciate this honor. And I have with me a whole team of people. This is Beth Yoke, our Executive Director for the Workforce Council of Southwest Ohio. We have Natasha Chestnut, she is our Board Chair, the Workforce Council's Board Chair. Lynn Really, she is the OMJ Center Director. And we have Trina Jones, she is the WIO Manager. And then Tim Dangler does the teen, the youth, right? So thank you, we really appreciate this.
Yes, well, and thank you for all that you do, particularly, and Commissioner Reese read off the youth components of this. And it's extremely important that we continue to engage young people in our community. So thanks so much for the work that you're doing. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
I was just to thank you for all the work that you do, as was said earlier. But what you're doing is creating, continuing to create a middle class. These are the positions that need to be filled, and so we can continue to grow as a nation, as a country. So these are extremely important positions, and you're starting when they're young. And so that's really good. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I just want to thank the team. And when, when we come around, I can't wait to see everybody because I'm behind this. And I want the TV to see all, I want y'all to get over there so the TV can see you. But thank you so much, and particularly right now, people who need a job or who are maybe being furloughed or laid off or a company's closing, and they have to be able to get a job in order to be able to take care of their families. So the work that you're doing is so, so critical to so many families throughout Hamilton County, connecting them and re-engaging them and retraining them, so that they can be able to take care of their families. The particular one, obviously, with youth, which I'm just ecstatic about, and I think is so important, this has been my motto my whole life, is that we must get our jobs program to our youth before the street job program gets to our youth. And so what you're doing, when you talk about over 2,000-plus youth that have been employed, but also connected to mentors, now have a, something on their resume that they can use when they get older, that they have some work experience, they get to see, is this the job that I want, or maybe I want to try something else? So all those different things that they get to do. And I want to also shout out the Office of Youth, who also, I think is so important because we want to be able to measure these things, and the Office of Youth has allowed us to be able to, to measure it. And then lastly, I just want to give them another, give you guys another shout out. We have the kickoff for the youth, where we are also reducing barriers. So not only do they get the job, but in order to get the job, they have to get the birth certificate, we provide that at no cost. They have to sometimes get a physical, we're providing that on the bus at no cost. I don't think any other county is doing it like we're doing it here in Hamilton County. So again, I salute you all, and thank you so much.
Thank you. So we've got a couple of public comments. We're going to come around for a photo. One is a general public comment, and then there's another one that's related to a public hearing that we have to get to. So as we move through the agenda here, the four, there was a Forest Park TIF item on the agenda that has been revised and removed. They have an update to their plan, and so they were not ready to present. So that's been removed from the agenda, we'll get to that at another date. If you don't mind, I would like to do the one general public comment and then move into the public hearing, which was supposed to start about 10 minutes ago. So we're getting there. But let's do this public comment first. Kamisha Webster is, I believe, on Zoom. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Commissioners, my name is Kamisha Webster. I've been here before. I am a Cincinnati native, but I'm no longer in the city, I'm outside of the city. And what I wanted to say, where really this disrupts my appearance of the city, is that I come down there and I see the roads are badly in shape. And I want to understand why they are not being taken care of. I had a conversation with Ms. Russell down at the City Hall, and we had a conversation like two years ago. Now, I noticed that my methods that I ran past her about reaching out to other companies and stuff like that, but I spaced in particular on Margaret the King, that they've been using those, all those gestures and things that I made in a state level, where that man keep coming back down there every single time, telling you what he did to get these county road, Indian Hill and everything. What about the regular community? What about the community? What about the roads? What is going on? What is the city's priorities at this point? It is a sham. I cannot roll down the street without thinking I'm going to fall in a hole, and especially in mountainous forests. It is unacceptable, and I, and I cannot believe that my dear city, Cincinnati, Ohio, looks the way it does infrastructurally. And it's amazing that you guys have somebody up there today as far as representing the infrastructure and things, and everything, saying that y'all got some things coming up. But we the people would really like to see what is really going on with that, because Cincinnati is in really bad shape, and I was under the awareness, and even in the inner city, in Queen City, and I was made aware that inner city, Queen City, has not had a functioning community council board to address any of the issues. And I was wondering how they was getting any work done. And Ms. Alicia Reese, you have the ability, you got everybody who you can holler at about some money, you got $200 million for that convention center, you got the million-dollar bills, lots built. So where is the city's priority today? Well, the priority was to get your business handled. But now we're looking for where we the people come in at when it comes to the infrastructure and the housing. It's a big problem. A lot of people are getting backdoored, people have inside relationships with people down at the building of where they make the Health Department complaints at, they're making complaints, and people are coming out, but nothing is getting done. There are several people living in bad buildings. I can't, I'm like, I'm amazed that you guys have, have somebody come up there saying, this is the building awareness week. Well, I want y'all to be aware that a lot of people are living in bad situations with bad landlords and bad builders, with so many regulations of, of things that are going wrong, and it, it doesn't make no sense, and it's being heavily overlooked. And I feel like if Ms. Alicia Reese, you are a face-
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Denise, and Ms. Denise, and Ms. Denise.
Yes, the two minutes has expired. We appreciate your comments.
I understand. Y'all don't want to, y'all, okay, that's fine. But I want, I-
I want to let you know though, ma'am, I want to let you know that we've got a public hearing for Planning and Development's 2025 Action Plan. So you might want to stick around for that, because we're going to be talking about the action plan related to some of the things that you mentioned. So thank you for joining us, and thank you for your comments. We are going to move into the public hearing around that action plan. James, are you going to tee this up? Okay. Katie? And then we do have a public comment related to this. So Joe, I'm going to have you go after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. My name is Katie Valley, I'm a Senior Program Manager with the Community Development Division. And just for a quick refresher on our annual action plan process, every year, our division is responsible for administering approximately $5 million in funding from HUD that is divvied up between different formula grant programs, including CDBG, Home, and ESG. And we're required to submit these annual action plans every year as a part of our requirements with HUD. These explicitly demonstrate what programs and activities will be undertaken with those three formula grant programs throughout that year. And as part of our citizen participation process for this annual action plan, we have a public comment period that started March 31st, and it runs through tomorrow, May 2nd. We held our first public hearing on April 10th, and today is our second and final public hearing for this plan. And at this point, we'd like to open up the public comment period.
Okay. Joe Hansbauer is here, and he would like to comment to the plan. Please come forward, you've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you. My name's Joe Hansbauer, I'm here representing Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati. Just a couple quick, brief comments. First of all, appreciate the Hamilton County Planning and Development Department in general. We build and repair homes in three states, nine counties, and 150 municipalities. And I can very declaratively say that we enjoy working with Hamilton County more than anyone else. So they, they tend to be very organized and responsive to questions and concerns, and so we, we do appreciate that. This process, I would say, is, is par for the course in that, in that it's very well documented, very well communicated. We certainly are happy to see homeownership and critical home repair as remaining priorities across two of the three buckets, and anticipate continuing the work that we're doing in the county, and in the best we can, utilizing some of those resources to expand the work that we're doing. So thank you all for having me up, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Thank you for weighing in. Yeah, we have had a presentation related to the detail of this plan in a previous meeting. So is there anyone else here to participate in this public hearing and comment? Okay, tell us what our next action step is here.
So our next action step, as I mentioned, the public comment period runs through tomorrow. So anyone who is interested in submitting written comments in person can drop them off upstairs, or submit them via email as per our website instructions. And HUD has advised us that we'll have 60 days to submit our plan once we receive our annual allocations, which has not yet occurred. So once that does occur, we'll come back to the board with a finalized version of the plan for review before submitting it to HUD.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to close the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, Commissioners, are there any comments before we close the public hearing?
I would just like to make a comment to Joe. Such a great legacy Habitat for Humanity, and just keep up the great work. You guys have really made a difference in so many communities, so I thank you for that.
Commissioner Reese?
No comment.
Okay, great. I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Katie, I remember you coming before, you were very thorough the first, yes. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, we also have a number of individuals in the room related to our regular agenda items, one through five. So with your deference, I would like to move those to the top. Megan Guthrie and Abby Frisch are here to talk about these grants through the One Ohio Funds that we're all familiar with. This is the local allocation to, so we've got two buckets, one is the foundation money, one is the local allocation. So this is related to the local allocation. The Office of Addiction Response has made recommendations, has vetted the projects. We all have approved of these, and so now we are in a position to contract with the organizations that are providing the services. So Abby, please give us the, the detail here, and then we're looking forward to hearing from the different organizations.
Absolutely. So this is week one of three for our contract signing dates, and this is the second round of local grants that we've done. So we just wrapped up our first round of grants, and we will be hopefully contracting with 14 agencies this round. This is a unique process this time. We have had the wonderful opportunity to partner with the city of Cincinnati. So Dr. Grant Musman is here for any questions related to that. And I also want to give a shout out to Tiffany White from the Health Department for all their collaboration. But we have approximately $3.9 million in local grants coming through. 1.9 of that was pledged from the city, and 2 million is from the Board of County Commissioner 2025 Budget. These will be two-year grant projects. And just as a quick reminder, the MOU with the One Ohio Abatement Strategies, there were 14 different initiatives or strategies that could be used for these funds. And the, and through a process with the Addiction Response Coalition and surveying the community, the local grants will focus on treatment with gap funding or capital projects. And then recovery supports will focus on wraparound supports, such as case management or recovery housing. And then prevention has a youth focus as well. So we will go ahead and talk about the applicants. So all applicants who were eligible had to be nonprofit agencies or local entities, and they must have had a physical location within Hamilton County. So all of these grant programs will be taking place within the city of Cincinnati proper, with a few having broader programs throughout the county. There was 31 applications for this round of local funding with a request of almost $11 million, when we only had 3.9 available. So with that, we will jump into the different resolutions that we have. And first up will be Joseph House. We'll have Alicia Patterson and Joey Daniel coming to speak. They will have one new hiring position with their project, with the anticipated service of 165 new people through this position.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, thank you, Commissioners. First and foremost, I want to thank you for having us here today and the support for Joseph House and their veterans. My name's Alicia Patterson, I am the Executive Director of the Joseph House. I'm a licensed therapist, and I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I have been at the Joseph House since 2016. And this past year, we moved from over the Rhine into Camp Washington, allowing us to expand our reach. And now this new site allows for us to give services to not only female veterans, but also veterans with severe mobility issues, which is the first time in our history. This past year, we have identified some specific needs for veterans at the Joseph House, and that need is to strengthen the veteran recovery program, and by establishing a new senior peer support position. Senior peer supports are individuals who have lived experience, that is part of the requirement for the certification. They've walked the walk. The senior peer support will now complete intakes, they will onboard our new veterans, they will meet them at the door and, and instill hope, developing housing plans and connecting with external supports. This role will play a crucial role in addressing complex needs, military sexual trauma, post-traumatic stress disorder, and mental health needs. It will provide support to not only the veterans, but also their families, by offering guidance, conflict resolution, and parenting strategies. They will aid in the development of treatment planning, group counseling, education groups, and focus on their income, employment, and housing plans. And while I think it's important to hear of our vision, I think it equally is important to hear from someone who has been directly impacted from a service such as peer support. So I have Joey Daniel here, he is our operating supervisor. He is also a prior resident to Joseph House, who struggled for many years with substance abuse issues, and I welcome here today to share with you the impact this type of programming that you're supporting will give to the community.
Thank you, Alicia. Good morning. My name is Joey Daniel, I'm the operations supervisor at the Joseph House, as well as an Army veteran. Even though Joseph House was not in a position at that time when I was a resident there to provide peer support services, I have been directly impacted by peer support services through a former program that I was in. The peer supporter that was assigned to me at the time assisted me with not only navigating through my recovery, but willingly showed me how to live on a day-to-day basis and reintegrate back into society. Peer support has taught me that there are other people that struggle the way I did with mental health and substance use disorders. But more importantly, I knew that I was not alone. I also have obtained a peer support certification. It benefits me in my recovery today, knowing that I can be there to inspire hope and change in somebody that struggles the way I did, by sharing my lived experience. We do appreciate you all for giving us the opportunity to come here today and give you a little bit of information about the importance of peer support within our veteran community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Do you want to pass resolutions altogether, or?
Commissioners, want to do them separately or together? We can do this, we can do them separately.
Okay.
So in which case, I'm going to make a motion to pass Resolution Number One, or Agenda Item Number One. Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese? Yes. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, next up is Serenity Recovery Network. We have Allison Marcioni. This is a $240,900 project, and it'll be renovations for a currently owned building to add nine Level One recovery housing. So Allison is here.
Welcome.
Abby, thank you guys for allowing us to be here today and accept this grant. My name's Allison Marcioni, I'm the Executive Director of Serenity Recovery Network. I'm also an individual that's in long-term recovery, and actually an alumni of our women's program, House of Freedom and Miracles. I've been clean and sober for quickly approaching almost 14 years. So I have the, like the previous person, the lived experience to know that our program works, and am a living testament to that. So what we do is offer recovery housing for men and women. We have four separate properties located in Price Hill. We are an abstinence-based program, and we are 12-step focused. So we get individuals engaged with employment, engaged with a 12-step sober community, so that they can start to rebuild their lives, and we come along beside them and help them do that. This project specifically is to add additional beds to our alumni housing program. So what we have found in the past few years is that there is a really great need for housing after sober living. So what we can do is provide structure for people when they're in our phase- to know that our program works and am a living testament to that. So, what we do is offer recovery housing for men and women. We have four separate properties located in Price Hill. We are an abstinence-based program, and we are 12-step focused. So, we get individuals engaged with employment, engaged with a 12-step sober community, so that they can start to rebuild their lives. And we come along beside them and help them do that. This project specifically is to add additional beds to our alumni housing program. So, what we have found in the past few years is that there is a really great need for housing after sober living. So, what we can do is provide structure for people when they're in our Phase One program, and we help them get on their feet, get employed. And then, once they kind of outgrow our program, it's been really challenging for them to find a safe place to live. And so, we currently have alumni housing available. We have nine beds for men and women, and our success rate in that program is 93%, meaning that 93% of people that move out of that program are clean and sober and still engaged in our recovery program. So, we would really like to, and will with these funds, open up nine additional beds specifically for women with the intent to also offer family recovery housing. I like to emphasis... I like to put an emphasis on family recovery housing, but what I find is that women specifically oftentimes have to rush back into being a mom. And I see them really struggle when they aren't given the opportunity to really do that in a space that is structured and safe and provided with the foundation of recovery. So, what I would really like to do with this particular house is give women the opportunity to have their children there and reintegrate back into motherhood, but also back into society while being a mom and in recovery. So, we're really grateful to be given the opportunity, building permits in hand. So, we are ready to start building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Why don't we... Let's roll through them. Yep, keep going. Yep.
Next, we have Tyler Schmidt here with the Lit Movement. This is a $100,000 project with the recovery supports focus. And this will give initial startup costs for residents when they first come into the home, as well as wraparound supports for these individuals with an estimated serving of 100 people.
How you doing? My name's Tyler Schmidt. I'm the Executive Director of the Lit Movement. And on behalf of Lit and the board, just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come up here and share for a few seconds. Just want to talk about a few line items with these funds that'll allow us to make an impact. A lot of folks that we serve have a criminal justice background. We have a strong connection with the Justice Center as well. Kind of when I was birthing the, you know, the Lit Recovery Housing Program, I started partnering with the reentry office, and they had a reentry pod in the jail. And a lot of the folks, we would see them every week, and we would get them into housing and provide, you know, peer support, help them with jobs. And so, over the years, we just had a strong relationship with the Justice Center, working with a lot of judges. I was also a peer support mentor with Judge Powers when she had the Vet Court, and did that for several years. So, just had a lot of connections with, you know, the Justice Center and the courts down here. And so, with these funds primarily, you know, a lot of folks coming to us, men and women, are just indigent. And so, this allows us to give them the first two weeks free of rent, so they don't have to worry about that. And usually, within the first two weeks, we're helping our residents get employment, get them on their feet, help them get a sponsor, and connected to the recovery resources. We also have a peer support specialist on site that really helped walk shoulder to shoulder with these residents. Also, these funds will help us to get a van. We've gotten like donations in the past of just like used old vehicles that we've, you know, kind of made work. And so, this will allow us to just have some efficient, you know, solid transportation for our residents. And there's also, let me see, there's a few more items in here as well. Just one last thing I wanted to highlight, food, clothing, and hygiene. A lot of folks come in with just a bag from the Justice Center or nothing. So, a lot of times, giving them clothes, food, and hygiene kind of for the first several weeks until they get employment is just a big deal. We've usually floated the bill for that and just fundraised. But this will allow us to provide that support for all the residents coming in. So, thanks for letting me share.
Thank you.
Can I have a question on that ban?
Sure.
Which I think is phenomenal, what you just spoke about. Is this $100,000?
Yes, it's $100,000 over two years.
You can get a van and do all the stuff you just talked about? We need to hire you right away to... Immediately. But no, thank you. I just, I thought it was great.
Next up, we have First Step Home. Morgan Gibson is here. It's a $500,000 two-year project. And primarily, this is for gap funding for the essential services provided by First Step Home. They anticipate to serve 385 people, and Morgan will kind of go into the details of the project.
Welcome.
Morning, commissioners. My name is Morgan Gibson. I'm the CEO of First Step Home. On behalf of First Step Home, I want to express our sincere gratitude to this critical investment, the One Ohio Grant. These funds will allow us to continue to provide life-saving, trauma-informed, and recovery housing to women living with substance use and co-corning mental health disorders. This funding will treat, as said, over 300 women and approximately 55 children over the time period. At First Step Home, we offer a continuum of care. We offer residential outpatient medication-assisted treatment, peer support, and mental health services, all within a single neighborhood block of Walnut Hills. What makes our program especially unique is that we allow women to bring their children with them into treatment services. This means they are not forced to choose between recovery and their families. We are able to break the cycle of generational trauma by supporting the entire family unit. We also have onsite childcare, parenting education, workforce development, which will ensure that the women are equipped with long-term stability. This grant will help with our bridge funding gaps, maintaining our services. I would like to also thank Grace, who is with me today, who put this grant together. We appreciate you all.
Thank you for being here. We've got one more.
And then last for this week, we have Andrea Hatton here and Laura Kimble from the Coroner's Office. This is a $60,000 one-time payment for the additional gas chromatograph mass spectrometer, which is a machine that is used to identify substances within samples that are submitted from different law enforcement agencies all across the county.
Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you. Thank you for this funding opportunity. My name is Andrea Hatton. I'm the Chief Administrator with the Hamilton County Coroner's Office and Crime Lab, joined by Laura Kimble, Chief Drug Analyst. Obviously, our office has been very involved in the opioid epidemic from the very beginning on both our death investigation side and our crime laboratory work. We were excited for this grant opportunity to receive the funding for... You did a great job, Abby. Gas chromatograph mass spectrometer, also referred to as a GCMS, which we'll refer to moving forward for that. The... Just a little bit of background. Our drug section is, which Laura supervises, is responsible for analyzing all the illicit substances that are confiscated and submitted to our laboratory from local and regional law enforcement agencies. And the GCMS is the primary instrumentation that is used for that. I'll let Laura speak to the particulars, but again, on behalf of Dr. Samarko, thank you very much for this funding opportunity.
Thank you very much, commissioners. The purchase of that GCMS will actually allow us to shore up a deficiency that we currently have. We had two instruments go down, and that drastically affects our ability to turn things around in a timely manner. We do a lot of work with the Heroin County Task Force, and in some cases, they'll call us up and say, hey, we've got a sample. We're not sure what's going on with it, and request a rush on it. So, with the additional instrumentation, it enhances our ability to say, sure, they can bring it in, and within an hour or two, we can have results for them, and they can use that for their further investigations. We also do this for any other law enforcement agency that calls in and needs a rush request like this. So, the additional instrumentation allows us to meet those needs in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Wanted to open it up for any questions that you all have, but I did want to note too, with these local funds, each year, we contract with the University of Cincinnati. So, they're the evaluator on this project. So, they'll provide quarterly reports, as well as written biannual reports to the board to give progress updates on that.
So, thank you. I thank you all for being here. It is clear that some of the priorities of the board are being addressed through these grants, because when you look through them, we've got different populations being served, specifically veterans, families who are in recovery housing, including women and children. We've got a reentry housing project. And then, we've got the data that supports what we think we know about what's happening in the community related to drug trends, so that we can try to issue alerts when necessary and save lives related to that. So, all really, really important work. A big thank you to the city of Cincinnati. Grant, I see you back there, the Health Commissioner for the city of Cincinnati. Thank you for partnering with us in this effort. I think it really makes a difference when we're doing this work together and pushing these funds out and leveraging as much as we possibly can. I did note that the requests were for 11 million, that we were only able to do about 4 million, so we're overscribed as always. And I think that speaks to the need in the community for these services and for the work that you all are doing, for the individuals that we're trying to stabilize and get into, you know, a productive life here in our community. So, thank you so much for what you're doing. Really, really proud of this work, and thank you for the presentation. And I'm looking forward to the other ones in following weeks. So, with that, Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Abby and Megan, for all your hard work. We had to review all of those applications. And what it did for me was to better understand what exists in the community, because oftentimes, there's some duplicity of services. And so, we were able to kind of pull services out that were, as you were saying, dealing with different areas. And I think initially, some of the applicants were getting like one-year grants. One, another was three years, and then we cut it down so it would be a standard, a two-year grant process, which is good, because you get it for one year, you're just getting going, and you can't complete the task that you're trying to do. So, you guys were geniuses, just seeing, let's go with the standard and let them have an opportunity to really make a difference. So, I'm looking forward to the next applications to review. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, thank you for this. Thank you, Megan and Abby, for your work on this, and everyone, of course, our Health Commissioner, City Health Commissioner. Thank you so much. Couple of things I just want to get an understanding, because we get money coming from different places, and this is local money. And want to make sure that Judge Nicole Sanders, who's over the Drug Court, I know I'd gotten invited, all of us did, when the Supreme Court Justice came to Cincinnati. And I know that, in her words, the Supreme Court Justice at that time had said that it was bold for Judge Sanders to step out, and she partnered with us, and we've got a grant. Is this the grant dollars, or is this something different?
No. So, Hamilton County Commissioners wrote grants on behalf of Drug Treatment Recovery Court, two different federal grants, one through the Bureau of Justice Assistance and one through SAMSA. So, those are separate funding sources. But Judge Sanders does serve on the Region Two Board, which is the One Ohio Region Two Board that you all are on for the funds that come from the One Ohio Recovery Foundation. These are our local dollars that come directly to the county.
From the lawsuit?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And I wanted to thank, I know it was mentioned reentry, some reentry housing, and I would assume they're working together with our director, Trina, on that, because we've been trying to get some housing for reentry.
Yes.
So, they're working together. Okay, great. I'm happy to hear about the veterans piece. And I would assume they're working with the veteran services, so they know about it as well. If not, they should be connected to them. Yeah, making sure that they...
I said yes.
I said yes. Okay, I love it. That's great. And I guess some more are coming, because I know that there was a focus also on the African-American population. Is that coming on a different grant?
Yes. So, this is week one of three. We'll have five next week, and then four the week of the 15th.
Okay, great. Well, thank you both for your hard work and great job. I did see the quick response team outside, and they're weathering the windy, windiest downstairs. But I do want to thank the quick response team that has been out and about and also on the bus, and just wanted to acknowledge them as well for their work. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I am going to make a motion to approve of items two through five.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thanks again. Thanks to Megan and Abby, and thanks for all of you for coming in. Really appreciate it. All right, let's move back to public, or I'm sorry, comments and motions of commissioners. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Thanks. Just a few things I'd like to bring up. Of course, we had the Commission on Women and Girls presentation where there were some really important resolutions that were passed. I know you'll talk more about that in Norwood. And then, I participated in the Land Bank Board of Directors meeting. They are on the move purchasing other properties and also trying to assist other entities in their purchases. And then, the Workers Memorial Day they have every year, UAW has it. And I presented a proclamation from the board to recognize those workers that have passed away that were in the UAW during the year. And then, the city of Forest Park, they had a Mayor's Grove naming ceremony. They invited all the mayors of Forest Park to come. They're dedicating an area in the forest area, and everyone will receive a tree, and it was very nice. And I want to thank the city of Forest Park for the recognition. And then, of course, I had numerous conversations with our lawyers, our attorneys, with our administrator to try to reconcile some of the issues that were related to the Hamilton County Bengals MOU. And it got some great understanding as it relates to that. And Madam Chair, I would like to ask that, as it relates to the MOU, we did pass the MOU, and we were on a timeline as it relates to NFL and having to pass by April the 29th. But what I would like to request is an informational session for any community people that may want to attend, but more so than that, our next phase. I'd like to have public hearings, as I know we're on a timeline with the contract, the lease agreement coming to an end. But a hearing to go as we go to the next phase, which may be the term sheet, that our people in the community can take a look at that and make comments as it relates. I understand the MOU was, we had to move quickly, even though we did talk about it here several times, many times, and we were able to review it. But I'd like, as we move forward, to continue our transparency so the people can be a part of the next phase of this possible Bengals lease. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And let me just comment on that, because I too have been talking to the administrator. I was interested in having public hearings last year, really, on this issue, and we did not do that. But I do think informational sessions to the public would be helpful, just to bring folks up to speed as to where we're going. We all know we can't negotiate in public. However, I do think having a session where people can comment might be useful. So, commissioners, I'm happy to try to organize something like that. I assume it would be in the evening. I assume it would be off-campus. Is that a thought process? Commissioner Reese, any thoughts related to that? Or I'll talk to the administrator about the timing as well.
I would hope, I don't know if we can have two of them, maybe one at Memorial Hall, one at Sharonville. We don't know how many people will come out, but I want to be able to accommodate whoever would come out. I know you may be thinking that we may not have a lot of people come, but I think we need one down here and one out.
Yeah. And I want to bring some recognition to the fact that we do talk about this. It's on our agendas. People are welcome to come in anytime.
Certainly.
On Thursdays and comment, and we get plenty of emails and letters from individuals that want to weigh in. But I agree with you that some kind of public facing forum. So, let's work on it and try to get something sooner than later related to that. Commissioner Reese, okay with that?
I'm okay with it, but I want to make sure that when we're doing this, it's not just, you know, we're going to just listen to the people, and then we're not going to implement what the people are asking for. I had been asking for two years for a schedule, a schedule on the lease, and we never did get it. It could be published. It could be out. What are we doing? When are we doing this? Because there's so many moving parts. Public two, public hearings would be great, but it's not, there's a million meetings happening. I don't even know about all the meetings, and I'm an elected official. So, you know, it has to be, I think the public hearings is good, but there's going to, there has to be something else, because there's lots of meetings happening. I find out when they have a records request. I didn't even know about these emails. That was real nasty. And they gave them to me right before they were giving them to the newspaper. And the newspaper wrote them, and I didn't know anything about these nasty emails that were out. And all of a sudden, we went from nasty emails to now we doing a MOU. So, I just think there's a lot of things. There's going to be more than one or two public hearings. I'm totally for transparency of everything, but I don't know how we would do that when there are numerous meetings, and some we know about and some I don't know about. So, for transparency, how we do it is, might be more than just two public hearings. It might call for more. I don't know. Based on how things are moving, or how the state is moving, or this is moving, we might have to call for more than just two. So, I am for transparency. I would hope we could get that scheduled. I'd have been asking for, and the board... I'd have been asking for, and the board said, okay, this was like a year, two years ago. We were supposed to get some kind of schedule we could release to the public, so. And I can go back and get the tape because it's on tape, everything. That's why I like to say it in the public, so it's on tape. So I'm not against it, I'm for it, but I also want to make sure that if it need be more than two, we would have the option to do that before we are against the wall on a vote.
Okay, so it sounds like we have broad support for some kind of a public hearings in the near future, as Commissioner O'Dumas, you said, to update the community, bring them in the loop as to where we are, what we're doing. And so let's try to, Jeff, get those organized, and I do think it's important to take them out into the community in the evening when people can come after work and participate in those. Commissioner O'Dumas, anything further?
I was thinking about my green, then I said I'll let you do.
Okay, all right, all right, we'll get there. Yeah, there's no point in saying it's a Commissioner O'Dumas address very similarly today. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. Couple of things. One is I want to congratulate, I went to the YWCA Women of Career Achievement Luncheon, and I want to congratulate Raquel Howard Smith on putting together another great event. And I want to acknowledge and congratulate all the women that were coming into the academy. I was blessed to be a part of that last year, and it was just a great event. The National CEO of the YWCA, I thought, said some things that I think needed to be said in terms of giving people hope to continue to fight in this fight so that everyone has an equal shot at the table, and we're happy to see her. The other thing I was excited about was that they also mentioned the new facility that will have a ribbon cutting that we participated in helping to also fund for a women's shelter. I think Cleveland had one with the, when the CEO was, the national CEO was over the one in Cleveland, she did that in her term, and she was very complimentary about what we were doing here in Hamilton County with the shelter. So I'm super excited about that. In addition, I want to also acknowledge that the Small Business Day is coming up, our annual Small Business Day, and it's going to be May the 12th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Centos Center. People can still register, however, we have surpassed over 900 registered attendees. We usually average about 1,200. So people can go online and register so they could come. It's completely free, but you definitely want to be at this Small Business Day event. Also, on May 13th, which is 513 Day in all of Cincinnati, we will have our 513 Day, talking about the 513 Relief Day bus and honoring our partners. And that will be at 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Corinthian Baptist Church. And so we've provided over 30,000 services, and we've helped a lot of people. And I know, I know another county is now trying to roll out a bus like ours, but we're happy to have inspired people, but this is a new way to deliver services to the community. I want to also say that early voting has started and continues. There is an election. So I wanted to let people know that early vote is going on this week. They have extended hours, 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. No county commissioners, we are not going to ballot, but there are a lot of local races in various municipalities, so there is an election. We talked today about the National Day of Prayer, and certainly want to thank all those who acknowledge that prayer is so important to me, and so I'm happy to have that. And I want to thank Reverend Todd O'Neil, Bishop Todd O'Neil, Senior Pastor, House of Joy Christian Ministries, that stopped by our office for the National Day of Prayer, and I want to thank him. Also, I got a chance to, this weekend is the Flying Pig Marathon, and our board supported, a majority of our board, supported the Flying Pig Marathon, and we were able to do that. We had two votes to do it, but it has a $22 million economic impact. It's attracting over 250,000 people. Folks are coming in, get your hotels, eat, and I got a chance to kind of talk about that, and I hope to be down there to see some of the people. I know probably some of our board will be down there as well, so wanted to highlight that. Lastly, just want to thank everybody. I had an incredible birthday weekend, and I want to thank Park Place, had a great birthday party in Forest Park. A lot of Boots on the Ground is the song, and I learned about the Boots on the Ground and where those fans at. I had a great time, and I just want to thank all the people that came out and Park Place, a small business in Hamilton County in Forest Park. So had a great time, great time doing that. So that's that, and let's hope there's not too much rain that we can get through the Flying Pig Marathon. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things, and I'm going to lead with what's happening at 1:30 this afternoon, which is the naming for the Norwood Lateral for Bridget Kelly. Bridget, as we all have commented in previous meetings, was a stalwart for this community. She was a person of determination and dedication and compassion and love for people that she knew and that she didn't know. I mean, she was just a phenomenal person, and she hails from Norwood. And so Catherine Ingram offered a bill, and it is passed into law, to name the lateral, the Bridget Kelly Norwood Lateral. The signage will go up in honor of Bridget and all of her work on behalf of Hamilton County, but specifically to Norwood. She started in Norwood as a council member back in her 20s, and so she was an elected official and a public servant for many years. So we're thrilled to go and honor her, along with many others that are going to, I'm sure, turn out for the event. Talk about the weather, I hope the weather holds for that one, but we will be where. We're wearing our green and we're ready to go, so I did want to mention that. It's open to the public, people are welcome to go, 1:30 at the Board of Elections in the parking lot. So we do expect to be outside under a tent, so we'll see how we do. And thanks again to Catherine Ingram and the family of Bridget Kelly who helped facilitate all of that. I had the opportunity to represent the Commission at a couple of events over the weekend. One was the Artworks Creative Campus up in Walnut Hills. They have expanded their facility. They, of course, have this youth component where they bring youth in particularly during the summer to create these beautiful murals throughout the county. They have expanded outside the city of Cincinnati into the rest of the county, and so we were there to celebrate the opening of the Creative Campus up in Walnut Hills. Many of the young artists were there, so it was a fun celebration, and I offered a proclamation on behalf of all three of us. Also spoke at the Caring for Our Watersheds event up at the zoo. So the Conservation District has this event. John, you're shaking your head, you know it. But this is another event where young people compete for dollars to implement projects that they have come up with for the good of our environment, for the good of the people that live in this community. And they're very creative, and they talk about the watersheds and pollution and bees and all the things. So it was really fun to hear their presentations and talk to them about how we hope that after they, they're all high school students, after they go to college, they come back here to Hamilton County and work in one of the many ways that we have in Hamilton County to talk about the environment and green infrastructure and all the things that we're doing. So I was happy to represent the Commission at that one. And then also offered a proclamation on Sunday to Kenny Beerschank. He has been the conductor of the West Side Community Band for 30 years. I took my mom over, over to Mount St. Joe. We were there and listened to the band play, and it was really amazing. They're really good, and it's all, there are no strings, so it's all percussion and wind instruments. And it was just amazing. They were doing a lot of John Williams tunes and patriotic tunes, and so we did the proclamation on behalf of the board at intermission, and then we just stayed for the rest of the concert. It was so good. My mom didn't want to leave, and I'm like, okay, let's stay. So we did, but Kenny was very grateful, and the group was, you know, very gratified that he got that recognition from the county. So I was happy to do that. And then yesterday, Meals on Wheels is moving from their location on the Rock down in Lower Price Hill to a bigger facility. And so we went over there, they've launched into a capital campaign, and so we fund them through the senior services levy, through a lot of programming dollars. But this is a capital campaign to allow them to do what we fund them to do, which is provide meals and other services to seniors in their homes. They do way more than meals, but they allow people in this community to age in place with dignity. And Meals on Wheels is a huge partner for the county, and so I was able to deliver a proclamation on behalf of the board at that event and, you know, congratulate them on what they've raised so far, and knowing that they will raise the rest and move into a bigger facility so that they can better do what they do. And then lastly, I wanted to touch on a couple of meetings that have taken place related to state funding for stadiums. We've heard a lot about this in the news, and we've talked about it before, but I wanted to keep everybody up to speed on some of the meetings that have taken place on the Senate side. The budget is now in the Senate, so we are advocating to the Senate. We've done it with the governor, we've done it in the House, now we're doing it in the Senate. So we talked to Senators Blessing, Lang, Senator Ingram, the President of the Senate, McCauley, Senator Sorino, all to advocate our position related to funding for our facility. We have said that, you know, Cleveland is, Cuyahoga, well, really, it's the Haslams, who have put in for, you know, some funding to come to them. We did it in the governor's budget, and we're successful there, and so we just want to keep that momentum going and make sure they understand that we will make good use of those dollars as we improve the county asset down in here, here in Hamilton County. So that's all I have. Administrator Aludo?
Thank you, Commissioners. Just one quick comment and then one by leave item. Just a quick comment. I know one of the board's policy priorities has been, over the past couple of years, the formation of employee resource groups. I had the pleasure and privilege of attending a session yesterday. The Employee Resource Group focused on disabilities and specifically a panel of county employees who gave a discussion about navigating the challenges and rewards of having children who are on the spectrum of autism. And hearing from those employees yesterday was really empowering, interesting, and just want to thank all the employees yesterday who made that event happen, including Josh Jones and our Human Resources Department, who does a great job pulling those events together. And I just want to say this is about so much more than just, you know, attending a presentation at lunchtime, right? I mean, the idea that we have these employee resources groups, which the board has really pushed, is a great way to let these employees bring to, bring to light what they deal with as employees of this county. And that discussion, having that discussion in that group is really helpful, not only in learning about people's personal challenges and rewards of what they're dealing with in any particular issue, but also as we work with our fellow employees as coworkers to understand what they go through on a daily basis and making sure that we're more empathetic coworkers with them as well. So just want to thank the board for your policy guidance, and as we've set that up, thank Human Resources for setting it up, and also to the employees who have, across all of these ERG panels that we do, who have the courage to speak out on some of these things. So just wanted to let the board know that was yesterday. Want to thank Phil Beck for reminding me, because I was going to forget, I had almost forgotten about it, and so Phil was leaving the building and said, aren't you going to the ERG? I said, oh my gosh, yes, I forgot about it. So thank you, Phil. Speaking of Phil, I have a by leave item on the agenda today. Commissioners, this is by leave item number one in your packet, a resolution for awarding the construction contract for the Banks Hilltop, Lot B, package number two, site work. This is a award to Prue's Construction at 1.159 million. This is for the regrading, leveling work and the creation of the actual parking lot at the Hilltop location. The goal here is to get this completed by July the 24th so that it is available for parking for events over the summer, including the Cincinnati Music Festival. Phil is here to walk the board through it in more detail if there's questions, but the administration does recommend approval. I'll leave it to Phil to fill in any gaps here.
Good morning, Board. Phil Beck, the Banks Project Executive. That was a great summary from Jeff, thank you. I do want to say, not specific to this, but the prior contract that you all awarded, which was the demolition, that the asbestos wrapped up last week, and the structure itself is in the process of coming down as we speak. The elevated conveyors that we're concerned about from safety standpoint, those are on the ground now. So things are moving quick. There's two big cranes out on the site. But then this is the next step, where, as Jeff said, once the Hilltop infrastructure is removed and carted off-site, then this will level out the site and install the recycled asphalt and striping for the interim parking lot.
Okay, thank you. This has been a long time coming. This is the final piece of property, correct, related to Hilltop?
Yes, that is correct.
There was some conversation early on, this has been years ago, honestly, about when we construct these parking lots, having a bike path to the north so that there can be a connection from the east to the west, running all the way through the city along the riverfront. Has that been incorporated in the design?
Yes, that is actually part of the city's right-of-way. So there's a couple widths, if you will, from the current curb line on the south side of Merron Way. So the first width is designated for the sidewalk, pedestrian sidewalk, and then there's a second width that is for the Ohio River Walk, the continuation of that bike trail. So yes, and they have been in touch with me too. They're very proactive, so we have a open communication via email.
Okay, well, it was something that this board, and I can't remember how long ago that was, I don't even remember if it was this board, but we did talk about our desire to have that to the north. So thank you for incorporating that. One other thing, it just occurs to me, we talk a lot about impervious surface and, you know, the challenges with large parking facilities and runoff, and can you help us understand what actions are being taken related to that, to limiting the amount of storm water that would come off a parking lot into our MSD system and trying to preclude that from happening? I mean, what measures have been taken with this lot?
There, as far as impervious, we, for cost-saving reasons, we're looking at recycled asphalt, so it's not necessarily impervious. But drainage is a big concern and was incorporated into the design of the site grading. We had a test with the recent flood, once the waters receded, seeing where we had low spots and ponding. So the goal is to ensure that, and we're right, literally, right next to the river. So we want to make sure that the drainage returns to the river in an organized fashion. So we have incorporated that. There is existing storm infrastructure to the site that we are also adding to, to make sure that it does drain and doesn't pond.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
I have no questions. Thanks for your presentation. We've talked about it several times, and it's finally come to fruition, so thank you.
Commissioner Reese?
No questions.
All right, I'm going to move then that we approve of by leave item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Appreciate it. All right, let's move into the consent agenda. Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Your consent agenda is as follows. Item number six is a budget adjustment, budget adjustment number 18. I do want to just highlight one item here. The largest item here is around $600,000 for the Dog Warden. This is comprised of some vehicles, as well as the, really, just the reorganization of some payments on our annual contract payment, just to make sure, we're basically just moving money around so that now we are paying on an annual basis. So this is really not more, it's just reorganizing the schedule of the payments that we do on an annual basis to complete the contract. Item number seven, Commissioners, is a sales tax in credit card or in utility charge for Cincinnati Water Works. Item number eight is a resolution receiving donated equipment from, into the sheriff's office, is actually the donation of vehicles and cruisers from the Village of Addison to the sheriff's department. Item number nine... Item number nine is authorizing an agreement with Anderson Township and the Board of County Commissioners. This relates to police patrol, police protection services in Anderson Township at 15.59 million dollars. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Dodge, 2025 Dodge Durango as an addition to the County Sheriff's Office at 39,481 dollars. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease with the SPCA of Cincinnati at its Corrine Township Avenue Shelter. This is 140,910 dollars. This is a seven-month lease, the, after which it will go month to month as we look to transition facilities in, in our, the management of our animal shelters. Item number 12 Commissioners is the acceptance and authorization of a grant agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. This is a market development grant for food waste collection on behalf of the Solid Waste Management District. And Econopia is the name of the firm that will be the recipient of those grant dollars at 200,000 dollars. Then we have several JFS items, the total of which is, I believe, 2.69 million. This is, the first of these is item 13. This is a foster care agreement between the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of Job and Family Services with Open Arms Adoption. Item number 14 is authorizing the third renewal to an original agreement between the Board, Job and Family Services and Harbor Behavioral Health Care for Youth Employment Services. Item number 15, and that's at 2.298 million. Item number 15 is the renewal of an original agreement with New Life Furniture and the Board and Job and Family Services for Food, for Furniture Bank Distribution Services at 200,000 dollars. Item number 16 is a single source contract with Malone's Nursing Consultants doing business as King's Learning Center and the Board for 100,000 dollars for group home services. Item number 17 Commissioners is the reporting of no objection to one liquor permit in Corrine Township. Item 18 is requesting the authorization to travel at the county's expense. This is the treasurer for two employees to Columbus, Ohio. That's your consent agenda, Commissioner? The administrative recommendation is for the board to approve.
Thank you, Jeff. One question on item number nine. What is the term of this contract, the length of?
I had that written down. Commissioners, I believe the term is, I'll find it right here. It is four years Commissioners with one optional, or three years with one optional renewal year.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
No questions.
Commissioner Reese?
Just one clarification. I know you talked about it. So that on the budget adjustment, you have the Dog Warden 560,000 and then you have the Dog Warden 600,000. Those two different, I know you said to get us on a new payment schedule.
Right.
And then they're in here again for 140. I know that's for the location. But are both of those 560,000 and 600,000 regarding getting us on a payment schedule?
I believe that was the additional amount that needed to be funded to, as the supplemental to, to enable that payment. But John just walked in. John, is that correct?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand because it's listed twice and I'm like, well, I didn't just have a total, but I'm sure there's an explanation. So I'm just trying to.
John Brugan has entered the room.
John Brugan.
There's always an explanation, right? The two entries there, one, we have to do it in both the general fund, which is the subsidy to the Dog and Kennel Fund, and then we have to appropriate it in the Dog and Kennel Fund. The Dog and Kennel Fund is a lower amount. Is that right? Yes. The subsidy is the lower amount because we're using a little bit of cash in the Dog and Kennel Fund to offset the total cost.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, it was just confusing because it was listed twice. So thank you. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, great. With no further ado, I'm going to make a motion to approve a consent agenda items six through 18.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. We have nothing else before us, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.